You know about our little food pantry, it serves the community, it's open 24 hours a day, and people who put food in, take food out, give what you can, give what you need. And I would like to request a city trash can on our corner, so that we can maintain the cleanliness of that street better. And of course, we're always seeking members, and we serve our community in different ways. We have Alcoholics Anonymous every week, and we give them a very ample rate. And I guess that's all I have for you, please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm gonna turn that over to you about the city trash.
Yeah, if we can follow up on those. Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, consent agenda. There is none. Action items. I see we have a bunch of resolutions to pass or to read, so you want to start?
Uh, yes, so at the first of the year, there are resolutions, and so recommendations have to be read through them. And if any, it'll be up to council, whether it be before we go tonight or another time, or if there's more time needed or not, but the first one will be Resolution 24-R-01. "The resolution of the City of Goldville to declare legal holidays and closing of City Hall to observe the holidays." Mayor, would you like the whole rest of the human?
Yes, please, for record.
Whereas the City Council of the City of Goldville has vested authority and power to regulate working conditions and standards for the city staff, and whereas the city has established a standard to observe all federally recognized holidays. Now therefore be it resolved that the following day shall be declared as the holidays for 2024, and that the City Hall shall be officially closed per business for the observance of these holidays. January 1st, New Year's Day, January 15th, Martin Luther King Jr. Day, February 19th, President's Day, May 27th, Memorial Day, June 19th, Juneteenth, July 4th, Independence Day, September 2nd, Labor Day, October 14th is First Nations Day and Columbus Day, November 11th, Veterans Day, November 28th, Thanksgiving, November 29th, Day after Thanksgiving, December 25th, Christmas Day. And this will be set up before the council tonight for vote.
I'm not seeing the difference between the one that says draft and the one that says.
I read the one that says draft, as all of them should say draft until you are.
Right, but this one's different, so it's different?
It only added the word draft.
Oh, that would be, oh, still a difference, okay, thank you.
We've never had them on there before.
Okay, alright, I get it, thank you. What I was intending to present, as I said earlier, is the one that said the word draft.
Right, I got that, I just thought that there was a change between the ones.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure you've read all these, but could you just read what the changes are on the draft for the next?
Yes.
Few, so we're not?
Um, what's June?
It's a federally recognized holiday.
Yes.
Uh, it actually is a, it's state-recognized, well, is it federally? No, maybe it's just state.
No, it's.
Officially recognized. Yeah, it's officially a state-recognized holiday, and so therefore it's listed. And honestly, this is a resolution that was, these are the holiday days that the council had adopted a year ago, and so I can simply address or updated the dates for this calendar year. If the council would like any of them, not there, but these are either state or federal holidays. And so, just to, sorry. If you want the specifics about 24, give me a moment, I will Google it.
So these are paid holidays for staff, right?
They are paid holidays for staff.
Well, okay.
You can.
Remembering the, the, the pretty, bringing these slides.
Yes.
Yes.
We can.
Right. Uh, so we, do we just need a motion?
Yes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 24-R-01 as presented.
A motion and second. Any questions? Roll call.
Councilor Bishai?
Yes.
Councilor Martin?
Yeah.
Councilor Nysted?
Yeah.
Councilor Righney?
Yes.
Councilor Stampa?
Yeah.
Councilor Wilson?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Next resolution.
The next resolution as labeled draft would be Resolution 24-R-02, the City of Goldville. "A resolution of the City of Goldville to set council meetings. Whereas the City Charter of the City of Goldville has vested authority and power to the City Council to conduct business, and whereas Chapter 4, Section 13 of the Goldville Charter states, 'The council shall hold a regular meeting at least once each month. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council shall meet a minimum of once a month with the following schedules: One, regular council meetings, the council shall meet at 6 o'clock PM on the first Tuesday of each month in the City Hall chamber or at any place that the council may be direct. In the event a regular scheduled meeting falls on an official holiday, the meeting shall be held at the same hour on the next following day that is not a holiday.' Two, special meetings, the mayor, or in the mayor's absence, the presiding officer may call a special meeting of the council. Three, counselors may also call a special meeting by filing a request with the city recorder. Notice shall be given to each counselor at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Three, emergency meetings, an emergency meeting of the council may be called on less than 24 hours' notice provided that an actual emergency exists. The minutes of such meeting must describe the emergency justifying less than 24 hours' notice, and the council must be able to point to some reason why the meeting could not be delayed. Four, workshop meetings, workshop meetings may be scheduled as necessary by the mayor or at the request of the majority of the members of the council. Workshop meetings are informal sessions to review upcoming issues, receive special reports, conduct goal-setting sessions, and for special training purposes. By the executive sessions, an executive session, a meeting close to the public, may be held in accordance with the Oregon Public Meetings Law. The mayor or presiding officer or any two members of the council may call any regular, special, or emergency meeting into executive session by citing the specific provision of ORS 192.660 which authorized this session." So the change on this one was only the wording under the whereas, Chapter 4, Section 13 of the Goldville Charter. I reversed the language. Uh, oh wait, let's see. I had mistakenly had a line from the previous resolution on here about holidays. It was in my haste on Friday getting all five resolutions typed up. Then in my copy and paste, I did not correct it to be this, the line of the term. So forgive me, I was in a rush on Friday and neglected that. So I was getting it corrected to not reference federal holidays.
Right, all I needed to say.
Question, who's the presiding officer, since the mayor or the presiding officer, which sounds a little obtuse here?
So this is the language that came out of the rules under 12-R-11. So the language was exact as it was listed there. So I believe the presiding officer is the council president, and if the council president also is not there, the mayor can designate a counselor to
To.
oversee a meeting. So in the order of, if the mayor is not available, the council president, the council president's not available, the city council can oversee a meeting, so it's whoever that presiding officer is at that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, that Vision 24-R-02.
Second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilor Bishai?
Yes.
Councilor Martin?
Yeah.
Councilor Nysted?
Yes.
Councilor Righney?
Yes.
Councilor Stampa?
Yeah.
Councilor Wilson?
Yeah.
Motion carries. So the next one is Resolution Number 24-R-03. "A resolution electing the City Council President." I'm reading the version that's listed as draft. "Whereas the City Charter has vested power in the City Council to conduct business, and whereas Chapter 4, Section 18 of the Goldville Charter states, 'At the first meeting of each odd-numbered year, the council shall elect a president from its membership,' and whereas City Resolution 12-R-11 establishes rules of the council and states, 'At the first meeting of each calendar year, the council shall elect a president from its tenured membership,' and whereas the council president shall act as presiding officer in the mayor's absence. Now therefore be it resolved, Counselor Blank has been elected council president for 2024.'" This change was, in the original version, I only referenced the city resolution, so I added the portion of the charter. And comparing with Adam, our previous interim counsel on this one, as far as, in my interpretation and my acknowledgement of the charter is that the minimum, that it be, it cannot be less than. The resolution can add more often, but it cannot take away from, you can't be less than. So the city can have more things going on, but not less than what the charter says. So in order to both comply with the charter and the resolution, both are listed, that the charter requires in the odd-numbered years, the resolution said it's every year, and so this has, it's brought before you to comply with them.
Now, I completely disagree with that, from what my understanding is the charter supersedes any kind of resolutions that have been made. I would like to make a motion that we table this resolution until it can be clarified which, whether the council rules or the charter are the one, is the one that supersedes the other. I don't believe at this time we have enough information to make a qualified decision.
I'll say it, yeah.
So you have a motion and second, and that has to go to vote? There is no further discussion on a table motion?
Right, it's not tabled, well. Okay, I have a motion. And a second, roll call.
Councilor Bishai?
No.
Councilor Martin?
No.
Councilor Nysted?
Yes.
Councilor Righney?
Yes.
Councilor Stampa?
No.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Ties. Ties, right, right.
I vote no.
So the motion fails. So we need to strike one of these from.
No, the motion to table it failed. So there's no motion before the council at this time, so. So I would make a motion to strike the first whereas. You cannot, uh, to clarify, so, to clarify, so the charter exists as our base foundation. So the charter is our foundational authority document. And other than state law, you can't override the charter. You can add to through ordinance or resolution, but you can't take away. So as the foundation, the charter says that the first meeting of odd-numbered years, the council shall elect a president from its membership, so that shall happen. But the council also adopted a resolution that under council rules, at the first meeting of each calendar year, the council shall elect a president from its tenured membership. The charter says from its membership on odd-numbered years. The resolution says from its tenured membership every year. So you can do it more often, you can't do it less often.
So what is tenured membership?
Tenure means somebody longer, I mean, it's seasoned membership. So it would be that in the first meeting of the month, you do a counselor before that day. So not somebody elected that day and then going to be council president. So that would be what a tenured membership is, so at this time, all of you are tenured membership.
So no matter what, it has to be done at the first of an even number of years? Yeah, all I think I possibly, oh.
The charter says odd-numbered year of membership. The resolution says every year of tenured membership. Both are listed, I mistakenly only listed the city resolution in the original draft, so I added the charter language, so we have both ahead of you. So in order to be compliant, you would do it every year for both, or? We, I mean.
There is, I don't think, I don't think we can make a legally sound decision at this point. So, you guys.
I'll make a motion that we accept, that we, um, I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution Number 24-R-03 as it stands. On the, the.
A second.
So I have a motion and I have a second.
So in other words, if all, if we do it this way, we're gonna be covered no matter what. We're following all the rules.
I.
And if we do it every year, then we're following the first quarter out of the end, and the second one comes.
Both are standing off. If, if, you can nominate a council president at any time in a year, somebody can nominate a different president at any time, that can happen. But it says at the minimum, you shall do it on that first meeting, and in the odd-numbered years of the term. And then the resolution says you shall do it in the first meeting of every year. Now, the charter of presidents, you can't do it less than. The resolution adds to, that it adds another year to it. I do not have records to show what the annual process has been. This is the documentation I found. If the council chooses to put this off for the next meeting or another time until more clarification, that is up to the council. But I am presenting it as what I found, is a resolution that says every year, the charter says every odd-numbered year, and as presented on the draft version, has both listed for you to take action to comply with them.
I feel like you're purely providing opinion and not facts, and if you bring this to a vote, I will abstain because this is not a legal vote right now. So that's where I am.
I totally understand what you're saying.
Why wouldn't this be a not legal vote? I'm not understanding that, I have, I have a motion in play right now with a second. So what we need is to understand where we're going with this.
My recommendation would be, until I can confer with legal counsel or verify vote, that if you don't feel comfortable moving forward tonight, that you do postpone it, and then we can bring it back, at which time you can, we can have legal counsel weigh in. But in order to, and, yes, my professional opinion from somebody who's been in city, state, and county government, is that you apply by vote. That you can't take away from the charter without it going before the voters, but you can add to under the authority under open rule charter. So in that resolution that was passed by the council in 2012, and it is in the back of your packets, it is listed there, so you can see for yourself that it says that's when that will happen. So if you need me to look up the page in the packet in the back, I can find that for you. But both, both exist, and so it's a matter of, this is the first meeting, and that's why staff has presented this to you guys in order to comply with the resolution and the term.
Yeah, I have.
Motion to pass it.
But the motion is that to be, it's needed to pass, if the motion is to vote on the new counselor, council president, that's what this is asking for, it is not asking to pass this resolution, it is asking to pass a new president.
So the appropriate motion would be in order to follow this resolution, which would be to nominate somebody for council president, and then to vote on that. Uh, so for clarification too, Mr. Mayor, under page four, under Resolution 12-R-11, which is the City of Goldville repealing previous resolutions, adopting new City Council rules and procedures, page four, under the presiding officer, so section four, meeting procedures, A, the presiding officer. "The mayor shall chair all meetings of the council, but shall not vote except in the case of a tie vote of the council, number one, council president. At the first meeting of each calendar year, the council shall elect a president from its tenured membership. In the event of the mayor's absence from any council meeting, the council president shall act as the presiding officer. Wherever the mayor is unable, on account of absence, illness, or other cause to perform the functions of the office, the council president shall act as mayor pro tempore."
I know, I don't understand what that has to do with.
So what do we do with the open motion that's been seconded?
That is the question.
I think it would be appropriate for you to either clarify that you're intending for the resolution to be addressed in your motion, and therefore then somebody make a motion to nominate a council president, or if that's on your intent, something else.
Amend my motion to say that we followed the intent of this resolution.
And that you would be taking it up, then.
I would personally like this table for a later date till there's more.
Well, she.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. How could we do that way?
The other option is you could rescind your vote and make a nomination.
Or could I rescind the motion and someone else make a nomination?
Yeah, can you nominate yourself? Yes.
Okay, then that's what I would like to do.
You'd like to nominate myself?
Okay, is the fact that you can't even figure out how the word is?
So.
It's.
So with the resolution there.
Very easy to figure out, I totally understand what you're saying.
The third by would be, you can amend your motion to say, "Under this resolution, I'm nominating myself for council president," or you can say, "I'd like to rescind and make a new motion."
Under this resolution, I'm nominating myself as council.
So, and she needs to rescind, this needs all you started, she needs to rescind the motion, period, and that needs to.
I think that's the clearest way, is to rescind that original motion and then make a new motion.
Okay, I rescind the previous motion and make a new motion to elect a council president, and I nominate myself.
And who was the original second?
Me.
And you?
Okay.
Now you have.
A motion and I have a second for new council president.
And at this point, I again like to clarify that this is an illegal vote, and I would, um, warn counselors on voting on this, because this will come up to be legal.
It is.
I don't personally care whether I'm the proud council president or not, but this has not been brought here correctly, and I want it to be correct before it happens. It isn't legal right now, we are quoting opinions, Adam said, blah, blah, blah. You know, whatever, it's not the point, I don't, if I'm not the council president, I'm not the council president, but this is not done right, and I want it to be done correct. So you can have, if you want to vote on it, you're looking to be, have legal issues brought up against you for voting on that typical person.
So I'm hearing you're gonna bring up legal.
I will bring it, I will bring this to the Ethics Committee for it being an illegal vote, yes, so, and now.
That was a simple, an illegal vote.
So that's asking me to make a legal judgment, of which I'm not the one.
There's nothing before we do that, any vote.
There. There was a motion to table, and that open was denied. So therefore then a new motion was made, and that has to be voted on. And of which, if there is, um, from what I have seen, we're following both the charter and the resolution. And if the council doesn't agree, the council should vote accordingly.
I don't see a legal issue, I really don't, I mean, because they're both there. Uh, it's my meeting, so I'm just giving you my opinion. So I have, I have a motion, I have a second. You guys want to vote on it? Let's vote now. Because of talk, we can't, we just can't shut down a motion.
There's been a motion, it's been seconded, you need.
I can't do, I have the power to do that.
And I amended it.
Hold on.
What's the next step? A vote, a vote, I vote for, well, it's a roll call, it's a roll call.
Go ahead.
Mayor Posford.
Councilor Bishai?
Yes.
Councilor Martin?
Yeah.
Councilor Nysted?
No.
Councilor Righney?
Oh, abstaining.
Councilor Stampa?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Abstaining.
So is that here?
So you have how many yeses, how many no's, how many abstentions? I have two abstentions. Three yeses, so three guesses, one no, two abstentions, motion carries.
Yeah. Next resolution.
Resolution Number 24-R-4. Uh, this one is the draft, and I'll give the explanation of, it was brought to my attention that I didn't quote all the areas of the charter. I had taken last year's resolution and copied it exactly and forwarded it. It was brought to my attention that if the recorder is ever absent to have a backup, I conferred with other, um, city managers in the area about policy, about good financial policy. And they said, you, the best policy would be to have an elected official and the appointed administrator staff always be one of the two signers, so that one have a backup, the other have a backup. Our charter reads that the recorder being a signer, and the mayor or the president of the council when acting as mayor, and others such should be the counter-signer or recorder. So it was, I had simply put, the charter had authorized the following ones, and I had not. We've reworded this one entirely, so it's appropriate for it to be written entirely as well. So, uh, Resolution 24-R-4. "A resolution offering signatures for banking services on behalf of the City of Goldville and rescinding Resolution 23-R-3. Whereas Chapter 5, Section 22 of the Goldville Charter designates the city recorder to perform the function of city treasurer and be custodian of the monies and funds of the city. And whereas Chapter 5, Section 22 of the Goldville Charter designates the city recorder to pay out monies and funds belonging to the city on order of the mayor or president of the council when acting as mayor, and that all such orders shall be countersigned by the recorder. And whereas, under Resolution 09-R-10 and 12-R-11, the council established the office of city manager and designated the city manager as budget officer, assuming responsibility for city budget. And whereas good financial policy having checks and balances and accountability and having both an appointed officer and elected member sign at all times. And whereas, in order to conduct business, when a primary signer is unavailable, alternate signers should be named. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Goldville resolves the following. Section 1, the following positions are authorized to sign on behalf of the city, orders of payments and withdrawal of money. Mayor is primary, city recorder primary, council president if acting as mayor, city manager as alternate to city recorder. Section 2, all prior authorizations are hereby as be preceded. Section 3, if any designated depositary or bank of the City of Goldville is authorized and directed to honor and pay any check drafts or other orders of payment or money withdrawing funds from any account of the city when bearing the signature of the person listed in Section 1 of this resolution. The bank is authorized and directed to honor to charge the city for such check drafts or other orders for the payment for money, provided they resemble the signature duly certified to and follows bank by the city. Section 4 of the resolution is effective upon adoption." So again, the intent is that the mayor and the city recorder are the primary signers. That if the mayor is ill and unavailable and all that, that the council president acts as the backup for the mayor. If the city recorder were on vacation or sick or something and unable to do that option, the city manager would be the ultimate for the city recorder. But that there always be a check that it be an appointed and elected as one of the two signers, so they hold the checks and balances across. It, the intent of how, when this policy is presented, is up to the council to adopt policy and choose what you would like to do. The current signers are the mayor, city recorder, and council president.
So I'm confused at how the checks are happening. So who's checking to see that this is being followed by consistent agreement? With the checks and balances, how does that work?
Well, the process right now is that bills are presented to the city manager, who stamps them as a group to be able to pay. They go back to the city recorder, who then writes a check and signs a check. And then the mayor, sorry, you sign first, mayor sign first, okay. She prepares, she prepares the checks with the invoice, and it goes to the mayor for signature. And then he goes back to her as a secondary signature. And so the checks and balances is that she's preparing them, he's signing them first and checking the thing, but they go back to her.
So if she's not here and you're the one signing, and where's the checks and balances?
The mayor is still, or you in his place, I mean, whoever the council president acting on behalf of the mayor, the checks and balances for the staff. So that there's always an elected at the checks and balances of one of the signers with the administrative office, so you never have two administrative officers signing, two staff can't sign, do something without an elected, two elected can't sign without a staff. So it takes one of each side of the house to check the work of the other.
Where is that stated in any policy? That it takes one of each, where is that stated?
Under the 1, 2, 3, 4, whereas.
Well, where does the, where does this whereas come from? I, I don't know where this is coming from, because it ain't our.
So this is presenting a policy for the council to consider adopting. If the council does not want to have a policy of the checks and balances and just have it as is, the council can adopt to do that. This is a recommendation based on what I've been given counsel from reaching out to other city managers in other cities, and what I've been become aware of, of what's happened in the city in the past, uh, so that there's a checks and balances of what's going on. So the idea is that, um, you can't just get two elected officials to go and find a check and write a check. you can't just get two elected officials to cooh and find a check and write a check and sign it, and you can't just get two staff to write a check and sign it. This is creating a policy that would require there to be uh, elected and a non-elected to sign each check for the checks and balances. So this policy, this resolution is adopted, is creating that checks and balances as a recommended policy.
See, I think that that by adding two, having two city staff as people that can sign the checks is, is a very big potential for monies being misappropriated, and I, and I do not.
It has to be one employee and one.
Said this, and now we all know that in a perfect world, this isn't always followed. And we all know that with all we've gone through, that having, and with all the stuff we've gone through, with money being taken, stuff in here. That at this, I mean, with the way it stands right now, one council and one, whoever, the mayor, the president, and one staff member has to sign a check. If this is, I mean, there's nothing to stop, once, once two city staff are signers, there's, there's really nothing to keep them from hiding something that they want to.
There's no, the staff signing them, they can't.
No, that, that's, the main, I can say that, well, I understand this, that.
That's what creates the law.
Many times, these things, I, and I.
Then you come back and you think this is the way it needs to be done?
Well, I can, well, there's a lot of things that needed to be done.
When the question came up is, if our city reporters on vacation are gone, who would sign in the absence, or what that process, or how do we add the city manager as a signer as a backup? Contacted the bank and they said, you have to update your resolution, this is the authority we get from the council on who can sign. So the bank will refer to this resolution on who has the authority to sign. And so by clarifying in the policy that it shall be an elected and a non-elected each time, it's putting into the authority of the city to do that, and the bank will have this coming.
So you're saying that the bank's gonna look at every check and make sure one signature is a staff person and one signature is a council person? It worries me because we've gone through so much stuff in the city hall that I feel like giving the city manager both the approval process of check and the signing power that we're just shooting ourselves in the foot, and maybe not with you, but at some point, because we all know we have bad city characters, this is gonna shoot us in the foot, and I feel like it's just a bad idea.
It is up to the council to set the policy, what I would suggest though is you currently have a policy where you have the same person preparing the check as a signing. And so they're already, I, I mean, we have.
But the checks are approved by somebody else. You approve them, she prints them, and then.
And she signs them.
Well, after you approve them.
And you sign them, so, so again, this would require.
All right, okay. So, this is getting ridiculous. This resolution makes sense, is there any other person, any other councillor that this does not make sense to? No. It doesn't make sense to you either?
No, I, I think it always didn't make, it makes sense.
It makes perfect checks and balances. Okay, let's move forward, any other questions?
No.
Nope, you don't have a motion.
I need a motion. I'll make a motion to doubt resolution number twenty-three dash R dash oh four, resolution offering signatures to bank services on behalf of the city of Gold Hill and rescinding resolution twenty-three dash R dash three.
What friendly amendment, you say twenty-four dash R dash four?
Twenty-four dash R dash oh four.
Is that good?
Right, I have a motion and I have a second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Council Reshine?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yeah.
Council Newstead?
Yes.
Council Rayne?
Yeah.
Council Shannon?
Yeah.
Council Wilson?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, the last resolution before today is resolution number twenty-four dash R dash five. Again, would like your grace to read this by title only, then some of the words changed.
Okay.
A resolution is sending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of Gold Hill, and which will fill in less the following. The only change in this document from last, uh, the last version of this to now is under number four, non-public safety volunteers, uh, oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, number three, manual labor of elected officials. In the existing policy for workers' compensation, the manual labor of elected officials is not applicable. I am recommending, due to that we have at least three city councillors that regularly do labor on behalf of the city, that it would be in the benefits interest of the city to cover the manual labor of elected officials under workers' compensation. And this would require number three to be applicable instead of non-applicable. That is the only change that is listed in this from current policy. And I, um, when it became, as I was looking at our requirements under workers' compensation for reporting hours and our payments in light of that, and I met with our insurance broker, and we went over this resolution, uh, the previous resolution that existed. And, uh, it has that volunteers and boards and councils doing administrative duty is covered, but not doing manual labor, of which it had been pointed out to me that several of our volunteer elected councillors do a lot of work for us that helps on a regular basis. And they're not covered for this policy, so I believe that we need to update that. Or the city councillors that are doing manual labor can no longer do that for the city. And so my recommendation of the draft version is, uh, and the only difference between the, the one that doesn't say draft and the one that says draft is I added the word draft. Uh, but the existing resolution, uh, that we would be changing by adopting this this year would be the manual labor of elected officials be applicable.
What about, because it doesn't stay in there, anybody coming in and doing voluntary work, manual labor?
So, um, this covers non-public safety volunteers under number four are covered for two reasons. Parks and Recreation, assist with parks cleanup and maintenance, or with assisting with terrible administrative functions of the city, those two actions the volunteers are covered. There is a separate workers' comp uh, policy that I believe would be in our best interest to get, and I'm hoping to hope for that right now, and as soon as the insurance gets it back to me. It's three hundred dollars for the year that would cover, say, a volunteer was putting Christmas tree lights up and fell off a ladder, it would cover that. And I believe that's a, a coverage we can afford and should do, but I'm waiting for our insurance to get back to me on if there's a different cost for half a year since that would just go into effect today, or whatever that is, so, um, I've requested that. Uh, and that's a separate policy just to make sure that we're covered on this, but this is, uh, when it came to my attention that manual labor of elected officials was not applicable, but we have it happening. If, we either need to change the policy, say, you're covered, or we have to change the practice that you not doing manually.
Any questions, councillors?
Um, there's this line about monthly wage of eight hundred dollars per month. That, that's not, that doesn't mean we have to pay them, does it?
No, no, that, they assume that, uh, for workers.
Oh, they claim that to.
Is that a base account, yes.
Okay, so there's no obligation to pay us because we're covering that, okay, great.
Uh, Matt noticed under number two that there's an aggregate assumed annual wage of twenty-five hundred for all volunteers and boards for the other purposes under number two. Those amounts were already there. The only thing I changed in this to present to you was changing it from non-applicable to applicable.
Any other questions, councillors? All right, we did that, wait, go on. I've got nothing. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, with set resolution number twenty-four dash R dash oh five, I have to present it.
Sorry. I have a motion, I have a second, roll call.
Council Reshine?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yeah.
Council Newstead?
Yes.
Council Rayne? Rayne?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, huh?
Yes.
Council Vol.
No, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Verifiable yes. Most of the passes.
All right, any reports from the councillors?
Um, I, I just want to clarify, to just bring up to the councillors, I thought, I noticed that twelve weeks, I think everybody was keeping a copy of the council. Right, did everybody get a copy of them? This was in my packet.
Yeah, every packet had, in resolution number twelve R. So there, in, in the packets and some other resolutions referenced, oh nine R ten and twelve R eleven, both were included in your packet since they were referenced.
So I just want to, I, I just want to, because I know a lot of councillors, like we have a new city manager now, a lot of councillors aren't aware that, that we as individuals are not to go too little yet in structure to do things, but as a whole, we can talk about things in a structure to do things, so it just, on the first page at the bottom, it says, the city of Gold Hill operates under the council manager form of government. The council, the city's role is to establish city's policy, this, I'm sorry, the city council's role is to establish city policies and priorities. The city council appoints a city manager to implement those policies and undertake administration of the organization. And then the city manager is appointed by the city council through force and laws to direct the job for the city government and to prepare, prepare a monitor of city budget and problem. But I definitely, I would, I would recommend that everybody go through and read these because there's a lot of good information in here, and a lot of times we wanna think we can go talk to the staff or, you know, whether it be D and F and everything, we really can't do that, we need to go through a little, and we need to never instruct Lily to, and to, um, initiate policies or anything like that, anything like that needs to be talked about within the council and then the councillors can be instructed to do it. So just a little note of education, I'm not sure if you guys are all aware of that.
Um, and I'd like to, um, address that the planning made for the council, uh, Wednesday, uh, our new planner is Chandel Park, and her assistant is Robin, and I think she's, they're very good people, are coming to develop.
Are they here? Okay.
They're, they're, they're now on.
Okay.
Planning.
Thank you. Any other councillors? All right, how about, um, city manager reports?
Yes, so, um, I would like to, more than after meeting with our new planner, uh, that we're contracted with, with Harvey Pog, uh, Chandel Park, uh, that we are gonna be implementing weekly uh, office hours here at city hall with our planning staff available to the public. So on Wednesdays from ten to three, she'll be available, that if anyone in the community wants to come in and, and discuss, hey, I'd like to do this on my property, can I? Or what do you think if I did this, or can I run this permit request through you first? Uh, she's gonna be available to help, and so I am hoping that by having her here in, uh, we've even set up a desk in the back, we'll have a computer station set up there very soon, she'll be here tomorrow uh, for the first of those office days. Um, and the idea is that we want our citizens to be able to access our planner easier than having to go to Central Point and to be able to ask questions before they even have to put a permitted, so we can make the process easier for us. So starting tomorrow, from ten to three, every Wednesday, our planner will be here holding office hours for our vote. And so, um, and then I also have, uh, wanted to report, we did hold a planning commission hearing of a property, uh, on December twentieth, and the planning commission affirmed the staff findings to approve a variance uh, for, uh, the density housing request of that property. And so we're still in an appeal period, so I will not go into further details, but at this time, that is the one here in the planning commission had. And then, um, then I have listed that meetings report, so, uh, in my first uh, almost month here, uh, this week will be my first month, um, it has been a whirlwind, uh. I have, um, set up meetings with, uh, attempted to set up meeting up with you two, the city councillors, I still have two of you that I need to have those one-on-ones with. Uh, but I met with the mayor and, uh, the other four city councillors. Uh, I have attended meetings with the legal Oregon cities, executive director, also with their small cities and their Oregon, uh, city county manager association, uh, their senior manager just reached out to me today as a mentor, and so I'll be meeting with him. Uh, the chamber of Jackson County, I met with the mid-rope MPO tack committee. I met with the Road Valley Council of Government's executive director and their planner. I met with Road Value Source annotations regarding the transfer, and we, I have presented to them, in order for us to remain fiscally responsible, that instead of us transferring all dollars on the anticipation in one month payment, uh, that, uh, I have asked them to consider allowing quarterly payments with a final payment in December, and they have agreed to do that, so I'll be following up with uh, a proposal to them in writing to do that, so that we can make sure in this transition that we stay fiscally sound uh, through the year without depleting our bank account to zero before we're there. Uh, and so they agreed to, their board agreed to that, and so we'll be following up in writing. Met with ODOT on the bridge project, I will report that ODOT's intent is to do the project in the one-year, eleven-month process instead of the alternate two-year. They said that alternate two-year is not a possibility. So by the time that they start this in about two years, uh, hopefully we will have worked out alternate routes for notification and transportation because this south entrance to the city will be closed for an eleven-month timeframe when that happens. Uh, and it will be about two years out when that starts, but that is what the last update on that bridge project was. Uh, we have asked for frequent updates on any of that process, and there will be several community meetings, and we have offered city hall as a meeting place for some of those meetings, so that every opportunity the public has to weigh in, they will be given. Uh, I met with Vision IT and also some alternate tech opportunities in order to try to save the city money and increase services regarding our IT services. Uh, met with Business Oregon, I met with our attorney, I, uh, was asked to present in my new role as to the American Association of Women for Community Colleges. Uh, I met with the public managers, uh, group, I met with SOREDDI, our insurance organizations review our, our things, uh, I met with, um, the planning commission and members, and then our engineer with an extensive meet. I will tell you that one of the first things that I've asked him to do was to apply for a grant to do a cost study of our rates for our water system. We have, I've been told, one of the highest water rates in the state, but they have to do an official study of our rates, and we have to have that on file in order to apply for other grant to improve our water system. So, we had to get this out of the way right away, and they're applying for grants so they can do the rate study, uh, so we can address, how do we find a way that we can uh, be more affordable and get our system up and running? Uh, so, that is uh, my report on the meetings that I've had this month, um, and I would like to add, as, uh, it was kind of a city manager good at the order, uh, on Saturday morning, I received a call that somebody had cut the fence, broken the padlocks, and stolen one of the city trucks from the water treatment plant. Um, uh, all the, well, the recorder, myself, and the mayor all ended up swarming, and, uh, the fence was repaired. Uh, we, uh, dealt with video with our alarm company and replaced the locks. Uh, the vehicle was recovered, uh, member police, um, uh, did locate the vehicle, uh, um, a potential suspect has been identified, but the investigation is continuing. So if anybody has any further information about that, um, please, uh, make sure to reach out with that information so we can follow that investigation.
I would like to add to that, that, uh, the perpetrator did leave us a tip, one pound of marijuana in the back.
I, I will say.
Your sauce looks totally misty when I got there.
Sure, there, there was a pipe in the front seat and a large flash jar of bud in the backseat, and we presented that to the sheriff's office, I did not eat it first. Yes, the red truck, uh, that's now spray painted over, they're getting like a spray paint to cover up the city of Gold Hill. Uh, and so, but we have recovered that truck. Uh, and then on, uh, New Year's Eve, Sunday, uh, I got reports from, uh, both the citizen and a councillor that, uh, there was a fire in our park, of which the shed of the Little League burned and that equipment inside, and so that also is being investigated by the Jackson County Sheriff's Office and Fire Officer Three, and so if anybody has any information about that, please share that. Um, it was a busy weekend for it to, supposed to be a holiday weekend, and uh, I again had to call on Dee's, uh, help on her day off as well on that and getting emergency contact information. Uh, and so, you know, uh, I was told welcome to the job, that is my report on my first month.
Thank you. And I will take it I have a new council president. Congratulations. Will you tell them that any papers?
Question security at the water treatment plant, as it, as it relieves and break into the plant itself.
You're working on that right now, in fact, we didn't, I patched the fence, because I had fencing at my house, so. Um however, we do have cameras there, but what happened was we had charter, and then we went over to under.
That actually didn't happen, but I prefer to discuss security outside of executive session, if that's okay. We passed along that I was a chief sponsor of that would allow that charter to be executive session, so I would recommend we talk about it in the executive session, be happy to bring that back to the council.
Agreed, right, you really might, well, it affects about eighty hours, like, so they get that, they're probably gonna power it. Any other, this, this meeting is adjourned.